All right, let's call the meeting to order. Township of Warminster, Board of Supervisors, this Thursday, September 2nd. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. I'd like to have a moment of silence for all our servicemen and women and all our civilian workers overseas, that they may return home safely. All right. We have some announcements. We did have an executive session tonight. We were discussing personnel issues and litigation issues. I think we'll save these two for last. Or you want to go first?
I was thinking, you can do your part.
Yeah, we can do that first. I'd just like to make one announcement before we bring up our new directors. I want to thank the police, firemen, all the emergency management people, Public Works, and our municipal authority employees. They did a fantastic job last night. That was a 150-year storm we had. Not only did it beat all the historical records, but it was historic in itself. So, thanks again to everyone for the great job and the service they provided. All right, so now with that, I'd like to announce we have two new directors. Our Public Works Director, Andrew McAdams, and our new library director, Susan Beluki.
You got it.
Thank you. Thank you. So, Steve, I'm going to turn it over to you, I guess.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chalston. Very thrilled to announce that we've got Andrew and Susan here. Both are doing a fantastic job. Susan just arrived, but just in a few days, you know, these are crazy times, you know, with all of the things that are happening with these storms and with COVID and all of the challenges. So, we're very thankful about Susan on board at the library. And Andrew, of course, has been right into the thick of it. Here is our Public Works Director, and I really do appreciate his guidance. He has got very, very good, strong knowledge of the public works field and has been very helpful to me. Andrew, can't say it enough. I mean, when I talk to Andrew, he's got a good approach, he's got a good way of going about things. On your agenda tonight are two items. We have an RFP for snow removal services, and we also have an RFP for consortium salt bid. These both came from Andrew's old department, and he is helping guide us through that process. So, we'll look to get these RFPs available tonight, and then at the October meeting, we'll hopefully have all the results in for you to take action on. But Andrew's leading a good team as well, but, you know, these are challenging times. Last night was a big deal, all day today, working on the infrastructure that had some deterioration. On Grant Road, we had the road surface buckle up and all of the other things. We're teaming up with the authority because we need to get everything right for the residents as quickly as we can. So, looking forward to both of you being here for a long, long time, and I can't thank you both enough, and I'm very, very appreciative of all your efforts, I really am.
Yes, welcome.
Welcome.
And I always say to all new hires that I hope you're here long after I'm gone. With Andrew here? Andrew, are you going to be here? Are you going to be sticking around?
I can't.
Because there is something on the agenda, we wanted to have a conversation and a discussion about the great performance of the road program and how successful it was. So, I know Erin's going to present that, I'd like you to be here too to add anything to it.
Not a huge presentation, but she has it in her month.
It's not a huge thing, report.
Right, it's in the month. So, hopefully it won't be that long. I just don't want to put it on.
No, 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 I mean, if you want to do it now, that's fine.
Your call.
No, we'll wait. And Susan, why don't you come up, actually so that people at home can see you. Andrew, why don't you come up first, say hello, and then Susan, you come up next, because I'd like you to say a few words.
How you doing? I just want to say thank you to the residents and the board for giving me the opportunity to join your team and your community, and I look forward to doing whatever I can to make it a great place.
Great, great to have you.
Thanks, Andrew.
Welcome.
Come on up, Susan. We've been looking for a library director, and by golly, we found one, and from what I hear, it's a great find.
It's a good, can you hear me? It's a good fit. It's a good fit. My husband grew up in this area, so we're moving back to the area, which is great. I'm from the Lehigh Valley, so it's been a little bit of a trek this week, but yes, we're very excited to be here, and I'm really excited for this opportunity. So, it's kind of a welcome home.
Great.
So, thank you very much.
Yeah, great to have you.
Welcome home.
Okay. By the way, the announcement that all our emergency management and all our services did a great job, but that was actually linked to something that's more important. We've been hearing for probably as long as I've been alive about driving through standing water on roads and what a hazard and sometimes a fatal accident, mistake. And our emergency management and police and fire spent an exorbitant amount of time last night with people driving around barricades and just going into flooded areas, and I don't know how many times it will take for you to realize that that's not a very smart move. And we ask again, what does it say, Kathy?
Turn around.
Turn around.
Don't drown.
Don't drown.
Don't drown, that's right. So, we can't stress that enough. So, moving along with the announcements, I guess we'll turn it over to Kathy.
Yes, I just wanted to piggyback on what Mr. Hayes said about all of our emergency services, our police department, municipal authorities, and our township manager for giving us all the updates through all of this and keeping us apprised of the situation. Really do appreciate it. Everybody, great job, well done. Thank you. And that's all I have for tonight.
Okay. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few. I want to start off, this is always difficult for me, to send out condolences, and this is an especially difficult one for me. We had someone pass last week, Brian Gottschau of the Hartsfield Fire Company. Brian was a 31-year member of the Hartsfield Fire Company, and he fought a courageous battle for many years. And it was just heartbreaking to go to his service the other day, and I want to wish his family well. And he was a terrific guy, he was a band parent for years and years, that's where I got to know him. And he fought a courageous battle. So, my condolences go out, and I'm sure on behalf of the board.
Yes.
To his family and to the Hartsfield Fire Company as well.
That's right.
But they lost one of their family members. He'll be remembered, and missed, he was a really, really nice guy.
I agree, Mark.
Okay, thank you. The next one I have is tomorrow night at 7:00 p.m., Operation Ward 57, Heather Slawinski is having a candlelight vigil at the Hollowell Pavilion over at the Warminster Community Park for the 13 service members that were murdered over in Afghanistan last week. So, it's at 7:00 p.m. tomorrow, I don't think she has a real agenda, it's a candlelight vigil. Anyone that would like to come out, it's at 7:00 p.m. at the Hollowell Pavilion at Warminster Community Park. I also wanted to mention that our golf course, Five Ponds Golf Course, was named the Golf Course of the Year in the state of Pennsylvania.
Yay.
And that's a great tribute. And I want to thank Penn Oil for reminding me about it, that the top golf course in the state of Pennsylvania, it says a lot to Mike Atar and his group from Spirit Golf, that they do a terrific job of running that golf course, because, as you know, we have enough headaches with the day-to-day here with Warminster to know that that golf course is in good hands, and it's turning a profit, and it's the best course in the state of Pennsylvania. So, that's something to be real proud of, all the residents, we own it, residents do.
Yeah.
So, it's something for all of us to be very proud of. And my final one, and this is just on a lighter note, that I want to offer my condolences to the Watts family on the passing of Charlie Watts from the Rolling Stones. I always mention when a celebrity passes, and again, I can't believe that Keith Richards outlived him.
I know.
Charlie always took care of himself.
I know.
Yeah, but condolences to his family, you know, he was a great musician and a really good guy, you know, so.
I don't think Keith, I think Keith Richards is a zombie.
Yeah, I can't believe he outlived another one. It's amazing, but that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you, sorry for being so lengthy.
Well-dressed gentleman, Charlie Watts. Yes, and my apologies for not being able to attend the service. Two of us were in the hospital and two of us were working, so we could just, and we're glad that at least we had Mark and Steve there to attend the service.
And they gave him a nice send-off, too. They had a police and fire escort all the way down York Road, and they gave him a real nice send-off, which he deserved.
Very nice, very nice.
He fought a courageous battle, he really did.
Yep. All right, who's next? Mary?
Okay. I have Parks and Rec's upcoming events. Warminster Day will be held Saturday, September 18th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at Warminster Community Park. The Warminster Day Committee is seeking volunteers, sponsors, and vendors for the marketplace. Please check out the website at wwwwarminsterdays.org. The Fall Golf outing is Monday, October 11th at Five Ponds. The shotgun starts at 9:00 a.m. Seeking golfers and sponsors. Again, that is wwwwarminstertownship.org. Backsplash special events. Our Rubber Ducky Regatta has been rescheduled for October 3rd at Kemper Park. This is still time to buy tickets. PRPS Discount Amusement Parks Entertainment Venue Tickets, discount tickets are available for a limited time of venue, for a limited number of venues. Some tickets are timed, print on demand, and print at home. A full list is available online. The Warminster Community Park improvements are underway, the grant construction at Warminster Community Park continues, and we hope to have work completed soon. For more information and to see a map of the project, please stop by Parks and Rec office at Warminster Community Park or call 215-443-5428. Dog licenses in Bark Park, the 2021 annual dog licenses can be purchased at Parks and Rec Monday to Friday, 9 to 4. Please remember, the Pennsylvania law requires all dogs over the age of three months to be licensed and have a rabies vaccination. 2021 Bark Park memberships are available. Virtual Bark Park orientation classes are held the 3rd Wednesday of every month, so please call Parks and Rec to be placed on the class list. There is fundraising for bank shot basketball. After receiving a generous legacy gift, friends are fundraising to complete the intergenerational all-inclusive bank shot basketball program. For more information or to donate, please go to www.friendsofwarminsterparks.org. And the Hometown Hero banners remain available. Friends of Warminster Park continues to offer Hometown Hero banner program honoring our local veterans. Banners are displayed along Veterans Way in Warminster Community Park from April through December. For an application or more information, please go to www.friendsofwarminsterparks.org or stop by Parks and Rec. Thank you, Mr. Tarron.
You're welcome. So, now that the Rubber Ducky Regatta's been rescheduled, I think, didn't you have some sort of job for me to do?
Yeah, normally, new board members go in the water.
Okay.
Leave it to your side.
So, I'm not the only new board member, correct?
That's right. You got three of ya.
Leave it to your side.
Okay.
Because last year, we didn't have it.
That's right, we couldn't have it, right?
Misery loves company.
My wife will be glad to be too, so she doesn't have to do it, she'll be glad to see you. She'll be glad to see you in there.
Okay. All right, and finally, Judy, please.
Hi, everybody. I'm glad everybody's safe after that horrible rain. I want to tell you that Ben Wilson Senior Activity Center is having their 2021 Senior Expo, sponsored by Parks Casino, Thursday, September 23rd, 1 to 3. It's free admission, it's going to be a health and wellness expo, and there's going to be food trucks outside for eating, and there's going to be over 45 vendors there, so come to that, it's free. And the Ben Wilson Senior Activity Center is inviting you all to the Designer Handbag Bingo on Friday, October 8th. The doors open at 6:00. Bingo begins at 7:00, and it's $30 per person, $25 for groups of six-plus, you know, and it's a good fundraiser for the Ben Wilson Senior Center, so try to attend, it'll be a lot of fun. Oh, and happy birthday to Kathy Frescatore.
If you're going to wait till the end.
I was going to wait till the end.
We can do it again.
That's right. Okay, thank you, Judy. All right, I don't believe there's any presentations, and so, let's go to Land Use Matters. Up on the agenda is the 2021-08, the amended final land development, 45 West Street Road, Chick-fil-A Restaurant, and Consider Approval Resolution 2021-16, 45 West Street Road, Chick-fil-A.
I believe Bob Tucker from Catholic Studios here on behalf of the developer. You guys can come up, and they can come up and sit at the table as well.
Yeah, sure. Just briefly, the applicant, this is the Chick-fil-A at 45 West Street Road. The plans call for the construction of a canopy over the existing order area and a canopy over the pickup area, along with some parking lot improvements and changes. The zoning hearing board granted a variance, required variance for the setback for the canopy on the front. Last month, the planning commission recommended approval of the plan. And again, we have our engineer and representative from the applicant here to answer any questions. Otherwise, I think this is a pretty straightforward deal.
Okay. Well, first, I need a motion, correct?
Yes. Would you like them to just describe on that?
Yeah, for, I know the, thank you, Steve. I don't think the residents on television can see it, but yeah, for everyone, for the benefit, oh, there it is. So, why don't you go through it for us, if you will? I know it's very straightforward, but if you could just give everyone a brief description of what you're actually doing?
I think that here's the property manager bull in here. So, what we're looking at here is the post-site plan, just what you see in the dark there, are the canopies, the back, larger canopy, if we're ordering windows serviced by heat lamps, lighting. I'm sorry.
Is it on, Mark? It's not on.
No. Next step. Yeah. The side you see in the back there, the larger canopy, is the canopy for the delivery, I'm sorry, delivery, the ordering operations serviced by some heat lamps, fans, and lights to provide protection and service for both the supplier or the customer and the consumer. In the front there, you have the canopy for the pickup window and some minor curb adjustments. It's noted that there is no additional impervious area added to the site, and all the access points remain the same for the property. And that's essentially a real minor application, just two canopies and a little bit of curb adjustments.
Okay. Go ahead, go ahead, Scott.
Erin, do you have any comments, anything to add at this time for the application?
No, we do not have any comments.
Just my question to you, you had a chance to review the resolution, are office prepared? Everything was will comply, and you're ready to sign that resolution tonight?
Yes, we are, we asked the board to approve.
Yep, all right. Then at this time, your chair, yeah, Mr. Chair, it's been too many days, different meetings, sorry, Mr. Chair.
He likes being called president.
I've done it once before, I can do it again.
No, no, let's not.
A motion is in order.
Yes, so we will need a motion to approve Resolution 2021-16, that conditional land amended final land development approval.
It's a motion, Chairman.
Second.
Is there a second, Kathy? I have no questions. Any questions or comments from the board?
Just a comment, I'm kind of glad to see you guys do this, because I see, especially the employees are out there in the winter, and it's cold out there in the winter where they're taking the orders, you know, and it does move people along. And I want to compliment you on how well you keep your property up as well.
Thank you.
It's one of my pet peeves going down the street, and your property's always manicured, and I appreciate that.
You know, and not only that, just to add, I do want to compliment you for coming in and doing the right thing the right way, because a lot of people wouldn't have done that, and you came right through, and you went through all of the proper steps, and we congratulate you for that, and we didn't have to chase you down, and that was, it's great doing business with you, and we hope you have a long, successful store in the township.
Absolutely, thank you. It's always a great pleasure working with you guys.
Thank you.
You've been a great business partner, and as Mr. McKee said, your property looks beautiful all the time, and I think that's a really great addition for the employees also, and it's very straightforward, and as Mr. Hayes said, we do appreciate that you followed the procedure and did it the right way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Any questions or comments from the board or from the public? Go ahead.
What's that?
No, no, you have to come up and state your name and address.
Hello, I'm Janice Charlton, 500 Lemon Street, Warminster. My question is, how tall is your canopy going to be?
The height of canopy is nine feet four inches to the underside and 10 feet, or nine feet, sorry, nine feet six inches the underside, 10 feet four inches to the top.
Darn, okay. I have a high-top conversion van, and it doesn't fit, the only drive-through it goes through is Taco Bell, so I was just curious. Kids are always asking to go, so, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay, seeing none, let's call the question, we don't need a roll call for this, just call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll go to public comment. Our first public comment tonight will be our tax collector, Bobby Loftus. Hello, Bobby.
Hello, Bobby.
Hi, Bobby. I'm Bobby.
Good evening. I just wanted to get a little rundown of what's been happening in the tax office. When I started collecting taxes for the township this year, I started with a little over $7,800,000 that I had to collect. I'm down to $113,000.
Wow.
Awesome.
Yeah. When I gave the reports in to John yesterday, I had 160-some parcels, and I had five in today. So, we're really doing well with that.
Fantastic.
If you would contemplate between now and the end of the year of looking at the contract for Portnoff, I would appreciate it. The fees that they're charging our residents are astronomical, and it's really breaking their backs. The second part is, when I started collecting for the trash this year, it was a little over $3.6 million, and I only have $53,000 left to collect. I know it's on the agenda for tonight, the trash, so if you don't want me to make my comments, I would appreciate it if you would move it up on the agenda after the public comments. I have a few things I'd like to say. I've been inundated with 75 to 100 people a day in my office, so do you want me to hold my comments till then?
You know what, we can, I think we can move that up, because we do recognize that's been a problem.
Well, there's a lot of people watching tonight, specifically for that reason.
And we've been trying to rectify that situation, so we do have, we can, is there any opposition to moving it up?
No.
No.
Okay.
Great, I appreciate it, because I have a couple comments.
Okay.
All right?
Sure.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And thank you, Bobby, for the great, great job, and thanks to the residents for stepping up and paying their taxes, fantastic news. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm waiting for Steve to come back with the contract for Mascaro, because we do want to, we're going to turn that over to Steve and Scott tonight to...
Are we done with public comments?
No, any more public comment? Certainly, come on up.
For the trash, if you'd like to wait.
Oh, you can, oh, you might as well wait, because we're going to get right to it. Anyone else that's not trash-related? Okay. All right, so that'll close the public comments. So, Steve, I guess I need a motion to move or not, to move the update on the trash collection now? I don't need a motion?
Not really an action, I don't need a motion.
Okay, all right, okay. So, why don't we move up the trash collection? Because we've, I've been working with Steve and talking to the board endlessly for the last two months, and we've, we think, I'm just going to turn it over to Steve, because this is a problem, not just here, it's a problem in a lot of different places, and I know a lot of people don't believe that, but, I mean, over in New Jersey, in certain areas, they've stopped recycling collection, and we've been driving, Steve's been driving around, Kathy's been driving around, myself, to other townships and speaking to other managers, and it's a, it's a problem, seems to be not just related to Warminster, but I'll turn it over to Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John, Tarron, and myself have been, of course, receiving a lot of calls, because we understand the concerns of the residents, we really do, and we feel that pain. We recognize that looking at trash in your front yard is not a pleasant thing, week after week after week. We had Mascaro here at the township the last meeting, I believe, and they had outlined what they presented as a contingency plan. And the contingency plan was that if they missed the trash on one day, they would come and pick it up the next, and that they would prioritize with trash, then recycling, and then yard waste. They have not adhered to that contingency plan. We do recognize that. We have been trying to work with Mascaro, we're in contact with them on a daily basis as to what we can do to get them to collect the trash sooner. Also, to help our residents, we've looked at any other option we could have, and that would be such as an emergency declaration, so that I could contract with another contractor without having the delay of going through a bid process to see if we could get someone else out here to collect the yard waste in particular lately. That has been the biggest challenge to our residents. I have then contacted all of the other local carriers in the area to see if I could get resources to come in here to our township to collect that trash, and, I'm sorry, mostly the yard waste, but trash and recycling if necessary. None have any resources available. I was thankful that they even talked to me on the phone, and they said we're experiencing difficulties in all of the places they are serving as well. I was hopeful that we might be able to do that, but unfortunately, there just aren't any other collectors that are available. I suspect that all of them would have jumped on this opportunity if they could, but unfortunately, they're not, and I was, you know, a little heartbroken that we couldn't get someone out here to do this for the residents. The residents are asking about that. That's a very valid question. Can't you get somebody else out here to collect the yard waste in particular? The next question, very valid question as well, can't we find another resource, maybe our crew or something else? Collecting that yard waste with equipment that is not designated for its purpose is problematic. Trying to maneuver a backhoe and/or a dump truck or other types of equipment through these narrow streets with parked cars could be very problematic and dangerous to the crew. The trash trucks are designed just for that purpose, so I don't recommend that we put those types of equipment. I'm fearful we're going to hit cars, we're going to do property damage, and then we're going to have a bigger problem, you know, as we go forward. The next question is finding Mascaro. We recognize that, that's the next most common question, well, hey, can you find them? We have put Mascaro on notice, we are tracking all of these complaints, we are using the resources we have to document these missed collections for the possibility of future action, and I say possibility, and I'll explain why, as part of this process, but we have not find yet. The final question that we get most frequently is, why are you still paying their bills? Have to pay their bills. If I did not pay their bills, they would have a very valid reason to say, you're in breach of your contract, I'm sorry, we've got other municipalities, and they would likely allocate resources to other places. I would then be doing further harm to our residents, and I don't want to get the township in a long and protracted legal battle with Mascaro. I believe that they have been honest with us in telling us what their plight is, and I'm seeing it when I call all of the other contractors, and they're telling me the same thing, that they're struggling with finding labor. We're hopeful that by middle of September, end of September, the labor market will improve. I'm hopeful, I can't guarantee it, but I'm hopeful that that will happen. So, those are the challenges that we face. At this juncture, my recommendation is to continue to work with Mascaro in an effort to get them to collect the yard waste as quickly as possible. They did make a lot of inroads this week. It is going to be a challenge going forward. I can't guarantee that the trash and the yard waste will all be collected on time every week going forward, but we will still work with them on a daily basis. They've been honest with us, and they have told us each day when they're behind, but I do recognize, this is, this is not a fun thing for our residents to go through, and I just want you to know, we're researching every avenue we have available to us.
Yeah, thanks, Steve, and the other... And the other thing that we were talking about and some of the board along with it was to possibly change, we, right now, we have two collections, mine are Tuesday and Friday. Maybe to get them caught up, we were thinking about possibly changing it to one day, but that creates a whole host of other problems. First of all, getting the word out. Secondly, the contract is for two days of collection, even though they do collect a lot of stuff that they otherwise shouldn't and they leave there, that's always been their argument, we take everything. So, this is, this is like a lose-lose. I don't really have a big solution other than to torture them and have our solicitor and the township manager continue, but is there anything you want to add, Steve or Scott?
Yeah, I can say, you know, we work in other municipalities and it is a problem elsewhere with different companies. I mean, this is the only municipality we work in where JP Mascaro has the contract. It's a problem there as well. I mean, I don't have a contract in the town I live in, it's entirely private. I have personal problems myself, I know it's a problem, but like I said, like I said, Steve and I are working together, our firm, township manager, we're going to find out what the best opportunity is. It may come to the point where a fine may be necessary, we're looking at what our rights are under the contract, we have those nailed down and we will present the best option to the board if it needs to go that way.
Being that we have a working relationship with them, I think it would be only fair that they reimburse us for the inordinate amount of time that's being spent by our township administration in handling the calls and complaints.
That's a very valid point. That was another thing that we were discussing.
Without having to take legal action and fines and all that, I mean, that would be the right thing for them to do to reimburse us. I understand John here has been on the phone six hours a day fielding phone calls.
John actually spends...
All the taxpayers, we're paying him.
Yeah, he spends his half, or three quarters of his day not doing what we need him to do.
Right.
But to handle trash. And then from what I'm understanding also, we need to check into this, some people have told me that they're not, they're not answering the phone, the hotline that they allegedly set up.
Correct, that's what I've been getting as well.
And they're also saying that they're, some people think they're blocking their calls and they're not returning calls, so, you know, I could, I could make a motion to have our solicitor go through all the documentation that we have now and then through the future to see if, to see what the appropriate action would be, whether it be a fine or some other type of...
Settlement.
There has to be something.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, you know, I know this is a burden on our residents, but it's also a burden on, you know, it takes a lot of resources away from our township staff as well.
And that's the problem.
Yes.
It's a huge problem.
And it's a burden to us because we're trying to, we're trying to do the right thing and we just, the solutions are difficult because we don't have, it would be easy to call, to declare a health emergency and get another contractor, but they told us the same thing. We're in the same boat.
And who are we going, what would we get then if they're, if they're all struggling?
Well, that's what, they don't even want, they don't even want to address it, they don't even want to entertain it because they're struggling to get the labor resources as well, so...
What is the protocol, Steve, for, if, before it was like if they missed the one day, then the following day they pick it up, but now it's days and days and I think the problem is if folks knew or if something was posted on the website or something, we will pick up this day. People just don't know when they're coming or, you know...
And that's, and that's the problem.
That's the problem.
The problem is that...
Communication.
Well, eat, but...
I know, but...
They used, they said that it was supposed to be the next day. If they missed it one day, they'd pick up the next, but that's not happening, you know, and I'm, I talk to the people in, over where I live and other people and they're saying, you know, trash is out on the streets six days a week and that's just, that's why maybe we go, if we went to one day a week, but, you know, and then, then, then the other side of the coin is people saying, well, then we need to get some money back for that, which, but they're still handling the same amount of volume of trash. So, then that could be a legal debate in which we don't really want to enter into litigation that's costly to the township.
I think the right thing to do is we document the time that's being spent by our administration and legal team dealing with this and we need to be reimbursed for this.
I would agree, yes. It's taking way too much time, it's taking a lot of my time as well.
And my time too, I'm getting called, I'm sure all of us are getting calls and of course, when people call me personally, my trash has been sitting out for a week too.
Right.
Right, exactly.
I'm as upset about it as you are.
Yeah, exactly.
That's the first thing my neighbors talk about when they talk to me anymore, it's about the trash. And our yard trash was out three weeks last time, three weeks. With gnats and mosquitoes flying around it and the wet...
All right, so, so no motions necessary? We're going to just continue to document and try to reimburse, we need to recoup our costs.
I agree.
At the township level and anything else that they might want to consider.
We will continue with that and working with Scott's office as well and working with Mascaro and we will look for any other avenues we have as well to help the, to mitigate the problem. We do, we do recognize this is giving us an opportunity, as Mark had mentioned and Kathy had mentioned, and you had mentioned, Ken, about the possibility during the next contract, can we do something different?
Yes.
To prevent this from happening in the future. I think we're learning a lot from it and we will be able to make positive changes the next time as well.
How many years are left on that, by the way?
I believe, it's, we are, it's a five-year contract, this is the third year, so twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three.
And then was there an optional year after that, township option?
I don't remember how long the option is, but it's entirely a township option, correct?
It's a five-year contract with an option to extend for two additional years.
It's safe to say that the two additional years will be put on the shelf.
And that was, that was the original contract of twenty thirteen, I believe, and then readopted in twenty eighteen.
If I can make one more comment, I also want to make sure I mention this because this is important. Those that are on the back of these trucks are doing a heck of a job. They are not the ones we, we have a problem with. That is a tough, tough job and they are usually working long, long hours going from our municipalities to, you know, coming from the adjacent municipality, working overtime here, working on Sundays. I have allowed them to work on Sundays, that was part of the contract, that they didn't, but I know that the residents would want that, that yard waste picked up. We have authorized other, you know, changes to that as well in an effort to do, you know, to get the yard waste mostly picked up. The other thing we had talked about is the possibility that during leaf collection, could Mascaro offer some other, you know, help in that regard? We will research that as well, so...
Okay, now, one last thing, don't we have, didn't they offer us, didn't they put a truck at Public Works for yard waste?
Thank you. Yes, we, there is, this is not a perfect solution and I'm not quite sure how long we'll have it out there, but for the yard waste only, there is a truck at the Public Works garage and if you call us, we can tell you how to get there, but it's yard waste only, it's just one truck and, you know, those that were having parties this weekend found that that could be helpful because if they didn't get it picked up and they were having people over and they had the wherewithal to get it to the Public Works garage, some were very thankful. Others, we recognize this is not the best solution, but it was one other opportunity.
Yes, yeah, I wanted to, I wanted to make sure that everyone heard that and we need to get that out. There is, at least, if you have the means to do it, at least there is something there, there's another option.
Steve, what are the hours of that for them to be able to take their yard waste there?
I believe it is between eight thirty and four.
Okay.
Yeah, and that is definitely yard waste only, there are cameras there, so it's, please don't, no illegal dumping. Make sure it's just yard waste because if you throw your trash or anything else like that, then...
TVs.
TVs and all that stuff and then it, you know, one person will ruin it for the entire township because we'll shut it down and then that person may be prosecuted, so please yard waste, we don't want to go through that routine either. Bobby, do you want to?
Oh, my God.
Should I run, run, sorry, run in the other room?
If you think you have problems, usually be in my office because they come in person.
Yeah.
In the last ten days, I've had between seventy-five and a hundred people a day in my office. That's not including his time, that's my time.
Right.
Yelling and screaming at me and apparently they send some kind of letter out. I know nothing of the letter, people are calling me and saying, how dare you send this kind of letter to me? I said, I didn't send you a letter, I don't know what you're talking about. Yeah, I don't have it.
That was the letter that...
If I collect the money, you've got to at least let me know.
Yeah, they were supposed to, they were supposed to be in communication maybe from what I understood.
Yeah, well, forget that.
I'm sorry they didn't do that and we'll, we'll make sure they do that from...
One of the problems they're having with the township, and it's not John's fault, when you call the main number, you get license, you get licensed inspections.
Right.
And they tell them, call the trash company, they can't get him. So, if he's getting two to three hours a day or four hours a day, that's only half of it.
Right.
Because the other half can't get through. And when I give them the number, I give them the main number, it doesn't come here.
Doesn't that letter have Mascaro, didn't they set up a hotline?
Oh, they don't care.
Didn't they set up a hotline?
Yeah, they, they don't answer it.
That's, that's what I'm hearing.
And then the one, one gentleman came into my office, said, they had the audacity to block my number.
I heard that, yeah, that gentleman called the...
Yeah, you know, and there's, they're screaming at me and I have nothing to do with it, but I collect the money.
They should not be screaming at you.
Yeah, but you have to understand where they're coming from, they're not getting an answer when they call LNI because LNI tells them to call Mascaro. Mascaro hangs up on them, Mascaro doesn't answer the phone, Mascaro blocks them.
Yeah, that's, I, I, I just recently, well, when you, when you became aware of it, it was about the same time I did.
Yeah, it's, it's been ugly in my office.
That has to be addressed, that has to be addressed.
Yeah, now, there's, when, I have to do my reports to you every month, if they're not in by the tenth of the month, I get fined twenty dollars a day. That's never happened because I'm never late, but something has to be done. We have given them a lot of money.
Oh, yeah.
And they're not doing their job.
Right.
Now, I'm not saying anything against Steve, I contacted two municipalities, I contacted Ivyland, which is, I, granted, it is small. They've never missed a day, never missed a day.
Are they contract, but aren't they privately contracted?
No, they're through the town, taxes, yeah, they use LEC. Now, they only have once a week pickup, they've never missed a day and their rates for once a week pickup are two eighty-four.
Without a can, that I don't ever use.
Yeah.
Right.
I also went to the Villas of Five Ponds because it's in the township, it's a homeowners association, we've missed one day. We all got an email saying there was a death in the family, they couldn't come, one time. We pay a hundred and ninety-two. So, I know there's two years left on this contract, two and a half years left. You have to look into it because I'm in my office by myself and the amount of time that I have spent with this is astronomical, especially when taxes are due. I was, when I tell you seventy-five to a hundred people a day, it's probably more than that and because once one starts it, then it goes right down the line.
Right.
So, something has to be done.
Yeah, we don't disagree with that, not at all.
Now, if somebody wants to call the township, is there any way that they cannot call the...
I don't know, um...
Because it goes to LNI.
When I call the number, it goes to LNI as well.
It does, every, every time you want to do anything with the township, it goes to LNI.
And they're supposed to transfer it.
Well, they, well, yeah, but when they say they're calling about a trash problem, they go, oh, you have to call Mascaro and it's not LNI's fault, don't get me wrong, they're not township employees.
Right.
They're employed by whatever company you use.
Yeah, when Mascaro came in here and did their presentation and gave us their contingency plan and promised that they were going to execute it, well, they also said that they did not want the residents, just to take the stress off of the, the short resources we do have, they said that they would set up a hotline and they would address it.
Yeah, so I get all the wrinkles.
Well, you weren't supposed to be the hotline, the hotline was not supposed to go to the tax collector.
I cannot even go into Giant shopping without getting, I haven't got my trash picked up in four weeks, I haven't got my trash picked up in three weeks, I don't even want to go food shopping anymore.
I think the yard waste is the four and three week stuff, right? The trash is, is the trash, I, I...
It's late too.
Oh, that's late too.
I know it's late, but look, we recognize it's a mess.
Yeah, I know you do, but there has, I mean, I don't know what the answer is, that's why you guys got elected.
Well, we're working on something.
Because something has to be done.
It does, and we all recognize that and we're, we're trying to, we're trying, as to Steve's point, we're not, we're trying not to, we want to work with them right now because LEC, by the way, is one of the contractors that we called and asked for additional...
Yeah, apparently Ivyland's very pleased with them.
Well, yeah, but they said, sorry, we're having the same problem and we're not, we don't have any resources available.
Yeah, because they do their own jobs and they do it well.
Exactly, and, you know, and Waste Management said the same thing.
Yeah, and I use...
And that's a big company, Waste Management.
Yeah, the Villas of Five Ponds use Evergreen and I tell you, they're super.
Yeah, well, I mean...
But we're small.
Right, it's, it's a very, very, very small volume of trash, it's not thirty-three thousand people in a township, right?
Right, and I understand that.
But we do, we, we're going to do something and believe me, if, I've spoken and Steve's spoken to them and I, I, it's not going to be pretty if it doesn't get better.
Something, they have to give you money back, they have to do something.
Right.
Because when you figure each resident is paying four hundred and forty dollars for two week, two pickups and they're not even getting one.
Right.
There's a problem.
I know, there's, there's a huge problem there, yeah. But that's something that we're asking them to do. I wasn't, I was going to make a motion, but I don't, they said it's not necessary. We're, we're going to have our solicitor and Steve...
Now, the only direct phone number that I have to hear, it's his.
Please, please don't.
And I'm getting so frustrated, I'm ready to give his number out.
I'm going to let you and Steve work that out, honestly, because I, when I call, it's the same thing.
Yeah, and it's frustrating and as I said, it's not LNI's fault.
Right.
You know...
Well, they should be, I can, I can work with Bobby and... Yeah, and then, and then again, that's where they were going to, they were going to address this.
Even if I have to start keeping track of how many phone calls I get, you know, it's just...
I wish you would, I mean, I mean, even if it's an estimate, that's fine.
Yeah.
I mean, I know you can't track them and, you know...
No, because it's frustrating, plus I'm trying to collect taxes.
Right, and that's part of our documentation that now, now they're, now it's affecting other resources that affect the township, I agree and you should probably...
I mean, I was trying to collect school taxes, I can't tell you how many people came in and said, I want a deduction on this because my trash isn't picked up. I said, well, number one, it's a school tax, it's not a trash. Then they call and they say, I want a rebate. I'm like, I don't have the money, go to the township. So, that's my answer now, call the township, but as I said, then they call me back and they say, we get LNI.
Yeah.
So, as you can tell, I'm very frustrated.
Everyone is and, and we live here too.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that.
We're not, we're not, like, my trash is, sits out just like everyone else's.
Yeah.
So, and...
Yeah, apparently there's one section of the township though that gets picked up all the time and I thought, oh, good for you, don't keep your mouth shut and don't tell me where it is.
Where is it? John and I don't know where that is.
Yeah.
I don't know where it is.
All right.
Not my section.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Bobby.
Thank you, Bobby.
And we're going to, we have, we have a good team here and they're going to, and we're going to, we're...
It's not their fault, but I'm frustrated online because I'm constantly, 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 I no longer hang up the phone and it's raining.
Yeah, I know. Well, well, Steve will work with you on that and originally Mascaro was supposed to take all these calls and respond to them and evidently they're not and, you know, I just heard about this, this week actually, that this is not happening or the very end of last week, so we're going to address that too. You're welcome.
Well, why, excuse me, why does the main number go to LNI?
Well, why, excuse me, why does the main number go to LNI?
It has been.
Been doing that for.
Since you did away with your receptionist.
Yeah.
Wants the receptionist let all phone calls go to LNI.
Right, so that was before we got here, I think.
Yeah, unless you say to them, "I want administration."
Right.
Because they direct calls to me about earned income tax.
Oh.
Right.
And I'll say, "Well, I just called and they told me to call you for earned income tax." It's frustrating.
Got that, Steve?
I do.
Okay. John?
John Prillo is 674 Joseph Avenue. I guess the moral of the story is, we all know where it all started, that it was with COVID. With the lockdown, and they couldn't get people to work because of where they were getting their people from. So, the issue that really you got to look at is, we're paying them a set fee for the year. So there's, it comes out to a total dollar amount to the end of the year as part of the contract. And without their staff, which means that they're not paying people, they're getting a windfall off of the trash that is not being collected or not being collected at the right amount of time. Yeah, it does go two to three days in my neighborhood. I know that. I see it all the time. But when you look at the whole thing, if they don't have the help to do it, they're not paying extra people to come out and spend, you know, for their wages and all the other stuff. So indirectly, they got a windfall, what they would normally pay on a full staff for the year, and they have half a staff, they're not, they're not paying out. So where you have to hit them, is you have to hit them in the pocket, you know?
We, we.
And that's the big thing, because they're getting away with, they're getting away with it. And if you look at it, they'll have a good year financially on the backside. And that's not really fair, you know? So they need to, they need to straighten out where they're getting their help from, or go talk to, you know, you know, who's in control of that, which we don't want to talk about, but.
I would agree that their employment model is not the, not the best.
Right, and it's just, well, it is, it is what it is, and it's what we deal with. But you have to, they have to, you know, we all have to understand that they're getting away with the financial end of it, and we're getting the shorter end of the stick.
Yeah, well, John, quite honestly, we don't like to show our cards, but.
That's it.
They may not.
Well, there it is, so.
Yes.
I hear you.
All right.
Thanks, John.
Do you want to address that?
Yeah, if I can.
Sure, certainly.
John, I just, do, do want to respond to that as well, because we are researching that as well. And there, there are substantial costs that they're incurring in addition to what is normal, because the amount of people that are home from work are generating more residential trash.
Yeah, yeah, I understood that.
And their tipping fees would go way up because of that. And we're asking them now to work on weekends and late at night, so they are incurring, I'm not, I'm not here to defend Mascara. But I also want to make sure I address that, because we have to take all of this.
You don't get everything.
You do, you do. But your comments are very much appreciated, so I just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, yeah, everyone's comments, and I know you had raised your hands. Come on up.
My name is Donna Braun, 517 Spencer Lane. My yard waste has not been picked up since the 4th of August.
Oh, wow.
After last night's rain, Spencer Lane stinks, big time. First of all, we had a flood. We're three homes got water in it last night, because they said they didn't open the sewer drain enough. I don't know what that's all about, but that's what I was told. But something has to be done about this yard waste. Now, I can't walk in front of my house because I can't breathe when I'm out there, because there's so much mold and stinky stuff from all this grass.
Yeah.
And I've called Mascara, I've left messages, I finally got someone on the phone. He was very rude, and his answer was, "We're working on it," and he hung up.
Really?
Then I've been calling the township. I get a recording telling me to leave my name and number, which I have done repeatedly, and no one has ever called me back. I'd like to know why.
I will sincerely apologize for that, because we get email records for each of them. We have gotten many calls for Spencer Lane. And I apologize. We endeavor to get all the calls back. Now, we spend all day, including my, I'm helping as well in making those calls back. When, when John and I's phone is busy, LNI doesn't have a place to transfer it, it's going to go into a voicemail, but we still try. So I apologize. I will call you back tomorrow.
Thank you.
And go over there.
And we, we did, I did hear from someone else about Spencer Lane, and we, we.
I actually had to take a family from across the street and bring them to my house last night to spend the night, because they have a little boy, and I would not let him sleep in a house that was filled with water.
Right.
Wow.
Thank you. Well, with any possibility of them putting an admin in our, in our office and having a direct line, and have one of their employees sit here in this office and take the phone calls? I can ask. We can find out.
That's a good idea.
Put an admin on their payroll in our office. We have plenty of office, because the place is empty.
We can put them right where the receptionist is, was.
Yeah, exactly.
Right.
Until this, until this is resolved.
Right. I have no problem at all with that.
You know, that just dawned on me, when these things are coming in, no one's answering the phone, and no one's, perhaps they should put an admin in our office. Steve? I don't know if that's doable, or the logistics are, but.
Well, we'll, we'll look into that too.
Temporary employee of theirs, not ours.
Of theirs, not on our payroll, that's right.
Right, that's right. Come on up.
My name is Richard Slewacki, 536 Spencer Lane. Just like my colleagues, we haven't had our yard waste picked up for at least a month now. But I'm going to make a suggestion, maybe it could help you guys out, and that is, right now, Warwick has a drop-off for yard waste called.
Green Grinder.
Huh?
Green Grind, Green Grinder.
It's not, is it Green Grinder, or I forget the name of the, the company that runs it, but it's for Warwick residents only. I was wondering if these guys can negotiate with Warwick to try to have people from Warwick Minister to be able to drop this stuff off also. Because we're willing to pick up some of the yard waste, and, you know, from Spencer Lane and drop it off there.
There's a truck at the Public Works yard.
Yeah, but it's, that's not going, that truck is not going to take everything that we have on Warwick, on Spencer Lane right now. It's so backed up, all over the place.
Well, I will, we'll endeavor to get Mascara out there tomorrow. We did think that they had got to Spencer Lane. I'm disappointed to hear that they haven't tonight.
Our, our street's only one, one length.
Ah, okay.
And I assume that they probably on the low end of the collection there, because it is only one thing.
That's not, that's not an excuse. I won't, I won't accept that excuse from them.
Yeah, the name of the company is Sparks in Warwick. If they can negotiate for Warwick Minister to take stuff, where Glaley put up the, bring the trucks down with the stuff and drop it off in there.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Come on up.
Yes, name is Harry. Zeremin, I'm at 540 Spencer. We are dealing with the same issue. I just put fifth week of lawn waste out on the curb. The other bags basically are just shredded at this point. So now, even if we're having pickup, we got to shovel it, put it in another bag. Yesterday, in desperation, I tried to put a couple of bags in our normal can. They didn't even take the can with the trash in it. So, other streets, Miriam, Ivyland, they got everything picked up. We did not.
All right, why don't we, why don't we see if, if there's that much on Spencer, maybe we, for that street, maybe we need to get Public Works out there with a dump truck.
I agree. Tomorrow morning.
Yeah. Well, we might be able to get, Will is the route person for Mascara. We'll call him first. Actually, we'll call, we'll probably leave a message with him tonight, because he might be the quickest way to get it picked up.
Now, question is, do we have to keep them in the paper bags, or can we put them in plastic bags, so that they don't fall apart?
Uh, many people.
I'm still going to have to go home and shovel it tonight.
Yeah, I heard that was a huge problem last night, all over the township, the paper bags.
Oh, they were all ripped.
I was picking them up and they were falling apart.
That's a very good question.
I don't mind putting it in another bag, but if they're not going to pick it up and that's going to get wet.
What we're hoping to do is get it cleaned up tomorrow. Now, we have Andrew here, Steve, I don't know, but that's one of our options, is for that street, as bad as it is to get Public Works.
If they're not there tomorrow, we need to get something.
If Mascara's not going to come tomorrow, then we have to, we have to do it.
We'll figure something out.
Now, do you have some way with your public announcement to alert people, like you do when you're doing fire hydrants, that we're going to do this tomorrow on Spencer Lane?
Are they on Spencer right now, all of the yard waste is still out there, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right, well, let's see if we.
We're not the only street, but, you know.
I understand, but.
Your street seems to be the worst.
It sounds like a mess.
That's the worst I've heard yet.
Yeah.
Me too.
So I'm glad you came out tonight, or we wouldn't have known.
Yeah, we wouldn't have known. I mean, I heard that they hadn't picked it up on Spencer, and I, I contacted Steve, and he contacted Mascara, and.
We thought that it got picked up.
We realize, I mean, I don't, I can't drive down every street. I'm sorry. I would love to, but.
Right.
But, but you're here, and you're letting us know, so.
I mean, the other option, like you would explain, communication would be good to know when they're going to come.
Well, we don't know. I mean, it's hard for us to know, because they don't, I don't even think they know.
Right, and I understand that, you know, listening to what you're going to go on. The other is, is there, you got to stop thinking, a pretty good parking lot out here? You know, I got pickup trucks, other people have them, you know, can we bring, if they don't get picked up, can we load them up and drop them off?
If they don't, well, they're going to get picked up tomorrow.
Okay.
Right, if it's not Mascara, it's going to be Public Works. After that, there is a, there is a truck that holds a lot of volume over in Public Works, and you can take your yard waste over there.
Is that where permits and stuff is?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, and there's a truck there now, but let us, I think that we need to get your street cleaned up as quickly as possible.
Yeah, and there's.
Anything after that, if you're willing to.
A lot of the bags, when they pick them up, they're going to go everywhere, so.
Well, I know, and the bags, I know, as soon as they get wet after a couple of days, that, yeah.
Whoever's coming needs to be aware that they need to.
I think we need to do that.
Bring some shovels to.
I think Mascara gets the first call in the morning. If they're not out there, we need to send our people.
Yeah, and, and we need to send our people out there, and then we need to document that as well, because they need to pay for that.
Sure, absolutely.
Absolutely, yeah.
That's right.
And I know you're all spending a lot of time on this, but we're also spending a lot of time.
Oh, I know. Everyone's frustrated, and, you know, and I'm, there's no one more frustrated than me, because this, it shouldn't be.
Right.
It really shouldn't, you know.
I mean, one week, two weeks, yeah, but five weeks?
Right, exactly. I agree.
And after they were here last month, we thought things were going to get better. It's actually getting worse.
It seems to be getting worse.
Right.
We all got, we all got the letter, and we figured, okay, great, you know, it'll be picked up sometime this week.
So Steve, can you find out if he needs, if the residents need to shovel it up and put it in plastic, and they put it in plastic bags, so they can, they know?
Hold on a second here.
Mascara says to shovel it up.
I think that, because it's been five weeks, that I don't think the residents should have to do that.
They shouldn't have to do anything.
I think we need, either Mascara goes in there and cleans that whole street, or our Public Works people go in and clean the damn street, and then we just charge them for it. That's as simple as that.
That would be great.
Yeah, and, you know.
We don't want you guys having.
There's no reason for the residents, and I appreciate the offer, but there's no reason, you've been, you've been patient enough, and now your bags are all torn open, and it's, and it's getting moldy, so there's no reason for that. Mascara's going to, Steve, they have to do it. And if not, our Public Works are going to do it, and we're going to charge them for it. That's as simple as that. I'm sorry, I, I, I'm getting tired. I'm as tired as you are, with honesty.
Yeah, I appreciate it. You know, it's just, we can't keep waiting.
Yeah, no, I agree. I agree. And the whole board agrees. I can speak for the whole board here.
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right, I appreciate it.
Thank you. I have a headache.
Can I just address one of the questions that you had? If, we do see that there are many residents who use older trash cans, not red trash cans, but they use an older plastic trash can with holes drilled on the bottom. And that is crucial, because if they are going to be late, and it fills up with water, if you, if it's just for yard waste and branches, which is a very common, if you drive around the township, you'll see this a lot of places. You'll see the branches in the, in the, in the blue, brown, plastic containers with holes that are drilled on the bottom so they can drain. That's helpful, because if that thing fills up with water, they're not, no one's going to be able to lift it, and we're, you know, but that, it's a suggestion. But we will, like Ken said, Chairman said, we will endeavor to get that all done tomorrow morning.
Ken, it's just not that one street. It's that development. I got more complaints from Mearns Road, Brook, Marion, Phillips. It's that whole development in there.
Is it that whole area?
It's that whole area. You know, I mean, it's.
Marion, Marion and Ivyland, they got, and Roberts, I think, they look all clear today. I think they got those yesterday.
Yeah, I know, I know, I had spoken to Mascara on Saturday and told them that this is it. They need to get things going, and, or maybe it was during the week. I can't even remember at this point, because it never ends.
Yeah, because I mean, Mallard Circle hasn't had it picked up in three weeks.
Right.
Leah Lane hasn't picked up in three weeks, so it's not, but that one development is really bad.
All right, so it's that whole. All right.
Okay?
Thank you, thank you. We're going to, we're going to address it. We're going to do our best, and please, we'll figure out how to get through without going to LNI and the voicemail. But, but I know, I know our staff doesn't.
We endeavor to make every call back.
And I apologize for them if they didn't get back to you, because that's not normal. That's not, that's just not normal. Our staff is great, and they don't just ignore, ignore residents.
But Ken, if they're leaving messages at LNI, and then they're not.
Yeah, I, it's convoluted. I know. It's convoluted, and we'll have to address that.
I think they should put an admin in this building.
I think so too. Let them, let them deal with it.
When I transfers the call right here, and you are going to answer the call.
That's right. Sam came up here, and he said that we'll, all those phone calls should come to him, and so why don't we do that? So, all right, well, thank you.
Thanks, Bobby.
We're going to, you know, we're going to continue to work on the problem. It is a big problem, and we're looking at all, all the actions that we can take. Not just punitive, but actions to correct and get things back on par, so.
They've made the crucial mistake of upsetting the tax collector.
I know, and I'm, that's why I have a headache. I'm scared to death.
I'm thinking, I'm just shaking my head, thinking, no one's going to be upset.
No, thanks, Bobby. I appreciate, you know, anytime that you have any of that type of information, please, please pass it on to us. And, and honestly, it's not fair to you. The residents should not be taking it on you, because you are the tax collector. You're not.
They pay the money to me.
I know, I know. So they're taking their pan of flesh out on you, right, right. So they can take it out on our staff, even though it's not their fault either. The real culprit is the guy up in Norris Town, right? Yes. All right, well, thank you. Well, we're going to continue to address it. Anything, any other comments on that? No? Okay. All right, so.
Consent agenda.
I guess we'll go to the consent agenda. All right, so I'll read them off. Consent agenda, the considered approval of Board Supervisors Amendment dated August 5, 2021. Consider authorization to sign lease and license agreements to allow the county of Bucks to install a blue drop box voting, blue drop-off box, or, excuse me, a blue drop-off voting box at the Warwick Minister Township Library. Consider approval of waiving temporary sign permit fee in the amount of $100 for Warwick Minister Symphony Orchestra. Consider approval to issue request for proposal for snow removal services, 2021, 2022 season, which is very important, we get that out. Consider approval to issue request for proposal for tree trimming and removal services for 2021 and 2022. And consider approval of authorization to award the 2021 and 2022 consortium salt contract. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
I'm sorry.
I'll second that. I have a question on one of the items.
Sure.
I'll second the motion. I have a question on the snow removal. We are sending out for the proper equipment this year. Remember last year, we had a major issue with one of our contractors.
Oh, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, and, and I'm not even sure if that's still resolved yet. How is it that they don't?
Well.
I've had no contact, but.
Yeah. Yeah, you're right. It was a mess. And your neighborhood and my neighborhood, everything east of Jacksonville Road was a mess.
They didn't even have the proper equipment.
Right, exactly.
I know that you brought up, so.
And then I saw what a great job our Public Works people were doing compared to what I thought was normal. Yeah, so we are going to make sure that.
That they have the proper, they're vetted properly.
And I think Andrew has, already has that well in the works. Thank you. Any other questions? Any questions from the public or comments? Okay, being none, let's call a question. All in favor?
Wait, wait.
I have a quick question about the ballot. Want to go up there again?
Yes, you do.
Janice Charlton, again, 500 Lemon Street. The ballot boxes that'll be at the library?
Ballot box.
One box. Box. Is someone going to be there to monitor the box, because I know they had problems in other areas with the voting boxes last election?
They'll have security cameras there.
Security cameras, and it will not be outside where people can tamper with it. It will be very secure.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? All right, so let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. All right, finance report. We'll turn that over to Mary.
Bill dated, bill list dated August 19, 2021, in the amount of $1,146,277.44. And a supplemental bill list dated August 31, 2021, in the amount of $970,205.45. For a total of $2,133,482.89.
Sir, a motion to approve the bill list.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments from the public? Okay, let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries 5-0. John, you're up. How are you?
All right, how are you guys doing?
Good.
All right, I'll be brief, as usual. When things are going good, it's easy to be fast.
Yes.
Before I get started, overall, all the funds are looking really good. I'm going to talk about the general fund, and since Susan's here, we're going to talk about the library fund. Right now, through the end of July, the revenues in the general fund are up 3%, or $321,000. Some of the big things that are happening there, EIT revenues up another $128,000. There was a tax collector committee meeting this week. 2020 was surprisingly a good year, 2021's even a better year, so it's still an upswing on EIT revenue. The mercantile tax is up $152,000. One of the big ones that we're seeing now is the transfer tax. I know we talked about it two months ago. Through the end of July, we're up $212,000 compared to the prior year. That number's going to skyrocket next month when I do this. With, in August, we actually had a sale of a property that brought in $236,000 on one sale. So that's one-third of the total budget for the year on one sale, so like, we're going to be looking really good, transfer tax-wise. Expenses, we're actually down 4% or $386,000. So we're spreading that, the difference. So from year-to-date through July, we're $708,000 in a better situation than we were last year. Again, last year was kind of an anomaly, anomaly with everything going on with COVID, so we'll see how that pairs still next year. One of the biggest savings that we've seen so far, it, I don't know if it's truly a savings, but the, in Public Works, the expenses are down $217,000.
Wow.
The biggest decrease is $174,000, but that was for contracted paving services. And this year, we're doing everything through the capital fund, and then we're going to get re, normally the general fund gets reimbursed from the authority, that reimbursement's going to go straight to the capital fund, it replaces those funds that were spent.
Yep.
So right now, I would say the, everything's looking really good overall, especially in the general fund. With the library fund, this is the great thing about government, is things tend to trend the same. Revenues are down $1,800, so 0.2%, and expenses are down $3,000 or 0.9%. So we're less than 1% different from this time last year for both revenues and expenses. If that trend keeps continuing through the end of the year, 2020 actually had a increase in fund balance of $129,000. So if we could keep trending that way, have that same kind of increase, that'll be great, especially for Susan, because the library needs a lot of repairs. So that's kind of something, as we're preparing the 2022 budget, is look at those repairs that are needed and actually make them. Because right now, I don't think anything is happening in 2021, it's kind of patch jobs. So what we could do is look at that fund balance and see what needs to be there, and put that extra money towards repairing the library properly. Besides that, is there any questions on the financial savings?
Just, just one.
Yes.
So the budget that we approved, and that we, we insisted on happening since, since 2020, is that we're actually showing some fiscal responsibility, so spending is down and revenues are up, correct?
Yes, yes.
How about that?
And I will say, the, the sale of the storm sewer, storm sewer system is not in these numbers at all.
That's right.
I, I take out any one-time revenues or one-time expenses, so that we're looking at straight operational revenues and operational expenses from year to year.
So we're living within our means once again.
Yes. So as we're preparing the 2022 budget, it's going to be interesting to try and keep this trend going.
Well, there's always challenges, and I'm sure we'll, we'll continue on that trend because that was the plan.
Yes.
And so far, it seems to be working.
Yep.
Thank you, John.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board?
Just to accept.
We love good news.
You don't need a motion except the financial report, right?
No, okay.
You're good.
All right, thanks, John. And it's always nice to, we like to welcome Susan with a little bit of extra funding.
A little different from where I'm coming from.
Right. All right, unfinished business, we went through the trash, we won't, we'll rehash that. Consider declaration of emergency for the pending storm.
Uh, yes. When, at the time that I wrote this, we didn't know when this was going to, but I would just, declaration of emergency for the storm that just occurred.
Yes.
Is, is in order. Just a motion to approve.
Yes.
Declaration.
And I believe that's necessary for FEMA and PMA funding.
Yep.
And.
I've already issued it, by you then endorsing it, it will go on for an extended period of time until we can address all the issues.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, you're extending it for an additional 30 days beyond what Steve can do, which is seven days, so you'll extend it, so it'll take it to, through, to our next meeting, and if additional storms, additional fines, we can extend it then again.
Okay. Is there, is there a motion to consider the?
Motion.
Declaration of emergency?
Second.
Second. Any other questions or comments? I think it's, I think it's a great idea to continue that, because there will be funds available.
Right.
Okay, any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, all, let's call a question, all in favor.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. All right, new business, getting there. Mutual aid agreement, Central Bucks Emergency Response Team. Steve, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a, a mutual aid agreement that has been in place for a number of years, but the contract language, there was an opportunity this year to update it, because it's been a contract that's been in place for so long, it needed, the language needed to be updated. There were a few municipalities that came in and out, but it is a, many, many municipalities within, I, I've got a list of all of them, but they're too long to, to actually read out today. But we work cooperatively with the other municipalities in Bucks County, and it's needed in case there's a big emergency here. Those resources then come to us. If there's a big emergency outside, we then can provide resources as well. The chief endorses this, this agreement. Your motion tonight would authorize him to sign this agreement.
Okay.
Chief, I think covered it, anything you'd like to add?
It's out.
Okay. So.
Okay.
Motion to approve the mutual aid agreement for Central Bucks Emergency.
Move.
Second?
Second.
Mark? Chief, would you like to add anything?
No, Steve said it's, we've been at it since 1997.
Okay.
It's expanded, and it's great team, it's great resource.
Okay.
We use it a lot here, unfortunately.
Yeah. All right, any other questions or comments from the public? Board, being none, let's call a question, all in favor.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Now, I'm going to turn this over to Steve. Consider a motion to approve the 2022 minimum municipal obligation for the township, because we have some great, great news for this.
Yes.
So originally, we were planning on using the smoothing method, which would have been for the police, and I'll turn it over to you in a second, Steve. $1,946,922 for the non-uniform, $461,795, and the non-uniform defined contribution plan, $32,500. However, our actuaries did a fantastic job getting things done on time, actually early, and now I will turn it over to Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do an actuary study of all of our pension plans every two years. That study's not due until March of 2022, but if the study is done early, you are able to use that study to determine what your obligation is. The actuary had informed us that they were going to try to get it done early. I didn't think that they would, but last night at 5:38, they sent it in to me, and there is, there is a savings that we can enjoy as a result of the good performance of the stock market over the last two years. So the study is based on 2019 and 2020 results. It's actually dated January 1, but it's the two years just prior to that. 19 and 20 are the results that generated the positive report. So with that, there's a new MMO, and it's based on market value, which is important, rather than what was known as smoothing. So the, the new numbers are as follows, for the police pension plan, minimum municipal obligation for 2022 would be $1,884,715.
Now, I'll stop you right there, that's fully funded at the market value.
Yes.
Not, not smoothing, okay? So it's just so everyone's clear, this will be the second time in two years that we fully funded the pension at market value. And the nice part about this is that we don't have to say, well, we're going to put in the minimum on the smoothing method, which lowers it, and if we can put in more, we will. We're actually going to actually say this time, we are going to put in to the pension plan's market value. And these are the numbers, and they're lower than the smoothing method that we had to put in. We have things to work on, as Mark will probably allude to, or some of the other board members, we need to lower the return interest, presumed return interest rate, but we're working on that as well. So these are all positives. Sorry, Steve, go ahead.
No trouble. The minimum municipal obligation for the non-uniform plan is $444,297, and then the minimum obligation funding requirement for the non-uniform defined contribution plan is $32,500. That is really just an estimate, we, we put in a percentage under each payroll, but the actuary likes it that we at least acknowledge the estimate as to what it would be. So we still fund that every month, different than the defined benefit plan. So those are the three amounts.
So using the market rate, market value, we're still saving $79,205, if I'm correct, estimated.
Yes.
Right, okay.
That's, that's the number you had just mentioned about the difference between what we had before yesterday.
And what we have now. So I, this is fantastic. I mean.
Awesome news.
You know, we had some bad news back in 2008, '09, '10, now let's take the good news, because, you know, it's, it's a beautiful thing.
This is tremendous news, and I, I've always been a huge proponent of paying market value.
Yeah.
Right.
This is a great step towards the big goal of, is of eliminating, we still have a huge unfunded liability.
Well, that's true.
This is a huge step towards.
Right, and like I said, we have a lot of work to do.
Great news, I mean, I'm not trying to knock your legs from any great news, but you only know this is not, our pension is not fixed.
No.
And we still have a huge unfunded liability.
That's a good point.
We have a way, we have a way to go. This is, this is great news, and I've always a huge proponent of paying market value.
Yeah, I mean.
We might be able to lower that, that rate as well.
That, that's a.
The assumed rate.
Right.
Which is.
And that, as that gets us to lowering unfunded liability. And if we can get that assumed rate, then, then that's, yeah. And if everything, we keep going with our plan.
We can get on top of this.
We can get right on top of it, right. And don't forget the OPA, the, other than pension.
I've been on that for years.
Well, we're working on that too. We're, we're going to actually, we have some plans for that as well.
Yep.
Which is fantastic. We won't, we'll wait for the budget to come out with that, I think.
Okay. Well, we had talked, we had talked here about the feasibility of creating a fund similar to the pension plans.
Right.
I'm still working towards the mechanism to that.
Yeah, and we're going to do that.
I'm looking forward.
Because it's, it's, it's something else that needed to be done for years, and we, and it was just neglected.
Oh, yeah.
And, and now we're going, we're going to do that as well. So a lot of things that were neglected are getting.
We're reaping benefits.
Getting some attention. And, and you know, and the, and the market's good, and by the way, it's not just the stock market, it's all the fund, I'll give some kudos to PFM as well, because they're the fund managers. So it's a lot of different funds that, that they invest in. They've done a great job.
Yeah, they have.
So.
You have a strong financial plan that you put in motion, you reap the benefits of it, and you're, we're seeing, we're seeing at firsthand how it's affecting the township on so many different levels, it's nice to see.
Yes.
You know.
It's good for the residents.
Good for everybody, yep.
And, and good for the, it makes life a little easier, especially for John.
Yes.
And Steve. And everyone, yes.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so is there a, a motion to consider the minimum municipal obligations for the township?
Seven.
For 2022?
Seven.
Okay.
Second.
Kathy seconds. Any other questions, comments from the board? Questions or comments from the public? All right, being none, let's call a question, all in favor.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Motion carries 5-0. That's great, great news.
Yes.
Hope it continues. All right. Now, Township Managers Report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to make, mention that the Public Works crew has been putting, I think has now put the final touches on the paving over at Warminster Community Park, and has done a fantastic job with that. That park project, I think, is just down to some, some final, you know, little items, but it's gone very well. So much appreciation to the, to the crew for doing that, they did a great job with that.
Great jobs, yeah, I was just there, Steve, the other day with my grandkids, and it, it looks great over there, it really does.
It really does.
Amazing improvements.
Yep.
With the grant money, really great job.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
And, yes, the, on the 18th, on September 18th, that's going to be a neat day to, to really showcase all the work that was done, and all the great improvements that have taken place.
Yeah, I, I, you know, all the residents, we're welcome, that's, it's the ribbon cutting right after the John Fox run.
Yeah.
Brad Fox.
Brad Fox, I'm sorry.
John Fox.
He was the congressman.
Yeah, right, right. Excuse me. So it's a, it's a full day, and a full day of a lot of fun and excitement, and other good things going on in the community. So I, I welcome everyone to, to come to those two events.
Yes. Also want to make a very big shout-out to our library people. They have been, we're so thankful Susan's here, but the staff has just done a fantastic job over the last month, a month and a half, running, you know, keeping the library running and keeping the library open, and I can't thank you all enough. It was a big deal. They did a great job. Everybody chipped in. I think Susan, I think you got a good team over there, so.
Great team.
And they all really care about the library, I know that, and they're very passionate about it.
Yes, they are very passionate, and even the library board is very passionate.
They are, and, and, and the team kept programming and moved the programming to the outside when COVID was a problem, and I had the opportunity to go over there and see a, a lot of their good work. Not enough times, I wish I had been able to go over more often, but, boy, they made it easy for me, and really want to give a big shout-out to them. So I'll, I'll be, you know, possibly asking the board if there's, you know, some, some way we can show our real, true appreciation for everything that they have done.
Yeah.
So, John, big shout out to John Tenter, uh, boy, John, you know, is new here too, he didn't wanna be on the spotlight tonight, so I told him he didn't have to be, but, boy, we wouldn't be able to function without John.
No, we wouldn't.
Thanks, John, for all your help.
And, um, you know, John does a fantastic job with all the calls that come in, I mean, we, we get, uh, uh, and, I think you would all be amazed at how many calls get, uh, processed through this office.
It's his first night on the panel, correct?
It is, it is.
Down to somebody comes in that door right there, duck.
Yes, we forgot to mention that, didn't we? But, uh, when I get all crazy, uh, John usually comes in and says, Steve, it's right here, what, what you're looking for is right here, and it's usually all done and already going.
John, you're doing a tremendous job, John.
Yeah, yeah, can't thank, can't thank. And we would be remiss not to, uh, thank the library, the folks at the library for, uh, keeping things afloat, moving forward, and, and persevering with, with the challenges we had in finding a new library director, so.
They really did persevere, that's a good term.
They're a very well-oiled machine there.
That's right.
Yes, so.
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
Uh, and John Ramy's team is doing a fantastic job as well, um, you know, John's, John's new here as well, uh, you know, not even here yet, right? You wouldn't.
Six months.
Six months. It feels like he's been here forever.
That's already.
You know, uh, he, he really, uh, brings a, another level to, of expertise to this process, which is very, very complicated, and trying to understand new software and how it works, uh, he's diving right in and, uh, endeavoring to do that. So the budget season is, is a big one for John, um, and understanding how our software works and making tweaks here and there to make it always work smoother is, is, is a big deal, so, um, you know, he's, he's doing great work on with the department heads, they'll be putting their budgets in soon, um, and getting that all ready for that whole process. It's a very, very time-consuming process, as you can imagine.
Yes.
Uh, Chiefs Crew, uh, shout out to them as well, um, they're assisting us over there at Shenandoah Woods, uh, we have not, knock on wood, I'm, I'm almost scared to say it, but we have not had any, uh, huge incidents over there because of the efforts of his team and the park crew in ensuring that the fence is being maintained as much as possible, and Andrew's crew as well, who assists with, assists with that. Um, the buildings that the Navy owned are down now.
Excellent.
Uh, and, uh, those are just the buildings that the Navy owned, which was a small block, and those were the ones that we had a big fire at. Uh, the next process is for the Redevelopment Authority, um, to finalize their contracts to remove the other buildings. This is, uh, a huge undertaking, uh, and will take, uh, you know, several months to do, uh, we're hopeful that they'll get started in October, uh, with, with that process, and Jeff, uh, and his team at the Redevelopment Authority are doing a great job getting it all ready, uh, to take down. There are so many things that need to come into play to bring down such a large complex.
Yes.
But we need, needed, needed to come down.
There's a lot of moving parts.
Yep, uh, parking wreck, I had an opportunity to go over to the garage sale, and I forgot to bring in the, the things that I bought there, but I gotta tell you, I got some really good buys at the garage sale, I buy tools, uh, my brother and I compete on seeing who can get the cheapest Snap-on and Mac tools, these, these tools, I'm sure Andrew knows, uh.
Lifetime guarantee, that's right.
Lifetime guarantee, and, uh, uh, I bought a, a coffee can full of, uh, sockets, uh, with Snap-on, Mac, uh, S and K, those are all guaranteed for life, paid twelve.
I believe they're all made in USA.
And they're all made in USA, and that's why I get them, because they're all made in USA, and they're the best tools.
They are, they are.
And, um, so I paid twelve dollars for that, and.
Wow.
One socket alone was worth sixteen, so.
All right.
I've been to the, the garage sale many ti, I shouldn't say many times, the times that I've been here, and, and, boy, it's a neat event, so, thanks to Karen.
So you announced the value of that after you made the purchase?
Absolutely, you know, that's, I paid every penny that the gentleman was asking.
That's right.
I didn't even negotiate down, I knew it was such a good deal.
You're gonna get a phone call tomorrow, he wants to renegotiate.
So, uh, thank you.
Is that it?
I think so.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Steve.
All right, who's up next? Scott, the Solicitor's Report.
Yep, uh, we had a couple of things, uh, Steve already stole one with the progress at Shenandoah Woods, you know, they're moving along, so that's great. Uh, the other thing we had was, if you recall from our July report, we talked about the, um, bankruptcy settlement involving the opioid litigation against Purdue Pharm, Pharmaceuticals, um, where they were setting up a trust fund in the amount of, I think the number was four point three billion dollars. Um, we told you another one will be coming soon, and that's coming through this month now, with, I can never say this name right, so I'm just gonna say it how I think, it's Malinkrod, it's a German company, uh, the trust fund they're gonna be setting up now is around three point five billion dollars, and there's gonna be more, obviously, more funds going into that, so it's the same sort of idea, that this money's gonna get distributed to the states, um, and then our Attorney General's gonna take it from there and how it's gonna distribute to a community, so we're seeing an end to these companies, we're seeing the two biggest go down, and it's continuing on, so it's been a good endeavor for the township to be involved in. But.
Excellent, excellent news, because that is an ongoing problem.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Scott. Uh, now we can go to Erin, hello.
Hello.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Glad to see, uh, baby and mom are healthy.
Yep, happy and healthy.
Yes.
Tired.
Excellent, then tired, great.
But, um, our biggest news is that the Township's twenty twenty-one paving program is slowly coming to a close. Um, we are working to confirm that all of the pavement markings have been placed, and that is the last outstanding item. Um, Morrissey has one or two more punchless items that he's coordinating with Andrew on, I believe that are remaining, um, so it, everything looks great. We, it went incredibly well.
That's terrific news, because I'm used to days pass and we're paving roads in November, that's, that's terrific.
Yeah, all three point five miles, yeah.
We'll be doing twenty-three this year.
Something like that. Yeah, and you know what, and they did, and, and from what I hear from, um, from Erin and, and Craig, and I haven't spoken to Andrew Manip, but what I hear from Steve through, uh, Andrew, uh, through Steve is that it went incredibly smooth, and, um, and, uh, there were very few hiccups, and, and it looks great, I've been around and it really does look nice.
Yeah, when, when can we expect to see, uh, some type of presentation for scheduling of the ADA corners? I know it was done in rapid speed, but we're gonna be two years doing the ADA corners.
Yes, um, we are working on a plan, we are confirming, um, we're working with Public Works to confirm, um, which ramps need to be replaced. Some of them appear that they could be compliant, um, and we don't wanna replace those if they are compliant, so.
We can expect to see something in the near future, some type of scheduling cost?
Yes, yes.
Supposed to be coming up, uh, in, in the next month or so, I would think.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, and we are gonna do them, but, you know, I, again, it's an unfunded mandate, and, um, there are some municipalities that aren't doing them at all, and, but we are gonna do the ones that, uh, are required, and if it takes, it takes a little longer, it takes a little longer, I mean, unless they wanna contribute to the costs, right?
I'll tell you, it's a real pleasure driving around the township on these roads, everybody you talk to, everybody's very, very happy, they, I have had some, some folks call me and say, wow, you know, I have not had my roads paved since I've lived here, and some have it thirty years, so it's been, it's great. Everybody is very, very happy, I have to say.
Yeah, and it comes out of capital budget or capital funding, and, um, you know, as we continue to put more money in there, now we have a bond rating, we've never had a bond rating, uh, which helps us incredibly to, uh, borrow for capital projects, I mean, uh, uh, everything's going in the direction that we were hoping it would go.
It's great.
So, uh, we're, we're gonna continue to try to do more than, uh, I don't know if we'll top twenty-three miles, but we're gonna continue to, to, to do as many roads as we possibly can through the capital funding, so, it's all good news. Uh, Andrew, do you wanna come up and make a comment about any of that?
Well, I actually came in when it first started, I think my first day was the first.
Yeah, I heard it was trial by fire for you.
I heard you held up very well.
Yes, I mean, I've worked with Morrissey for many years, I worked with Gilmore, obviously, for a long time, it's always a collaborative effort, it's never just one person, so, you know, I think as a team, everyone kind of, you know, put their heads down, got the job done.
Excellent, yeah, and, and, and thank you for walking into the, to the fire pit, it was nice, right into the frying pan. So I, I do think, um, that some of the, or if not all, the ADA ramps are gonna be done by Public Works, aren't they, or no? Have we just discussed that?
No, they, what, how Public Works is helping us is Andrew's, uh, for Gilmore a while back, uh, has the technical opportunities necessary to, um, apply the design criteria for them, so he will be doing the initial inspection of them, uh, as Aaron had mentioned, some of them don't need to be done.
Right.
Um, Andrew has that experience to determine which ones do and which ones don't, and to apply a design criteria that Aaron will then use for bidding them out. But we would, we would not do all of them within one year, we would do them probably over three years.
Yes.
Is my guess, did I, did I characterize that correctly?
Yes.
Yeah, that, and that makes perfect sense.
That's it.
There's no, there's no reason to do them all at once.
Yeah.
They're too costly.
So, we would have a contractor bid, that, uh, cement contractor would actually be doing the work, I'm sorry, Andrew, go ahead.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
Okay, fair enough, thank you. Anything else?
I don't have anything else.
Okay, all right, so let's see, uh, thank you, Erin, and welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Township Manager, announcements?
Oh, go ahead, I wasn't ready for that one.
Erin, I caught you.
You, you, you did.
I believe, uh, without objection, we are going to, um, cancel the second meeting, or is there?
Yes, I'm, I'm always in favor.
Objection.
I'd also like to make a correction, that the, um, there is a typo on there, it does say September eighteenth, it should have been the sixteenth, and that is the date that we are going to be canceling.
That's right.
Yes, correct. Okay, thank you, Mary.
Um, uh, let me put my thinking, uh, get my brain back in action here, um, upcoming will be the budget, of course. I don't know what we'll have for October, it is more than likely that what we'll do is we'll send out, uh, some type of a calendar to the board, um, for that. In the past, we have had workshop meetings, they are regular meetings and that, uh, the public is invited to, of course. We just characterize them as workshops, because that's usually the only purpose that they're used for, gives that opportunity to sit down in, in a less formal setting, but the public is always welcome and can comment at those, so, uh, working with John, uh, we'll come up with a schedule in between now and the October meeting, we'll have that published, uh, and, and go forward with that.
Okay.
Um, and then we would look for, uh, November, and the, the goal, of course, will be for the first meeting in December to pass the budget.
Yes.
Uh, so that's the, the main initiative that we're working on, uh, right now, I think, is.
Okay, great, thank you, Steve. All right. That's it, right?
Sure.
Okay, yes.
Steve.
It's enough?
Yes.
Uh, we also tentatively have the eight ninety York Road application.
It's a good thing Erin's here, thank you, Erin.
Yes.
Uh, correct, there, there was a new, uh, application, um, for eight ninety York Road, which is just, uh, be, just after you get the, to the entrance, uh, at Christ Home. Um, it is for a company called Eco Chic, uh, and they're looking to, uh, develop that property for a landscaping-type business. Um, we're expecting that they would be coming to the, um, Planning Commission meeting in September, the second, uh, Planning Commission meeting in September, and then to the board likely thereafter, all good?
Okay.
Thank you, Erin.
Thank you. All right, uh, here's our second round of public comment, John?
John Preo was six, seven, four Joseph Avenue, I just have a, two things to say, but I wanna address this, uh, Steve's tool buys. I, I could, uh, use a few of them sockets, if you wanna make a few extra dollars, you know, they always go missing in the shop, you know? The other thing is the safety fence at, uh, Newtown and Street Road, I guess that's what they call them, safety fences, and every night I go by and the gate's open.
Again?
We should always, yeah, three or four times last week.
And it, and it's mud tracked all down Street Road, I know they've been fine for that already by the county.
Need to do something, and, yeah, it's called a safety fence, it should be closed, right?
Okay, that's it.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll address that again.
Hi, Janice Charlton, five hundred Lemon Street, uh, I asked a question at the water meeting several weeks ago, or I didn't get the opportunity to ask the question, but someone else had, and didn't get an answer, um, the question was brought up about the, the appraisal of the water, um, stormwater, and since you were the treasurer, uh, Ms, Mr. Hayes, that, of the, uh, Water Authority, and since they didn't have an answer, you weren't there, do you know if there was, um, an appraisal done on that to determine how much we paid for the Stormwater Authority?
PFM did the appraisal.
PFM, okay.
Yep, they appraised it for the township, and they appraised it at between zero and ten million dollars.
And how, how far in advance of the sale did, was that appraisal done?
Years before.
Okay.
That was done when, um, the, uh, um, the previous board was looking to sell the municipal authority, that's when that appraisal was done.
So how do we come up with that number between?
Between zero and ten?
Yeah.
You'd have to ask PFM, I don't, I don't know that, I was not, uh, I was not part of that.
Is a copy of that appraisal available?
Should be, it was all part of the, the whole.
The only thing I could find in that packet was a, is a, was a PowerPoint, that that's what they estimated the cost of that, there was no physical appraisal done on the stormwater system, there's pipes and inventory or anything that I could find, anyway.
Right.
If there was, I'd, I'd like to see it as well.
We'll look for it, but, um, the three of us were not here on that board when that was all done.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I have one other, uh, question, suggestion, um, with our yard waste problem, is there a way for us to, I know we said that we could bring it there ourselves, um, if other people pick up each other's yard waste, is that okay and approvable?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, is there a way that we can, uh, put it out there to the community that it's okay to, for other people to pick up other people's yard waste?
Well, you can tell anyone you like to do, if you wanna pick up their yard waste, don't knock on their door.
Sure, no problem.
I, I don't think we're gonna ma, have to make an announcement about that, if you wanna be a good neighbor and pick up someone's yard waste.
Back to Avenue.
Back to Avenue, we'd really love to have you.
But since we had the storm, and, and I had a great conversation with the gentleman over at the Water Authority about the, uh, stormwater, um, all that yard waste that's out there, that's blocking, that's gonna go in the stormwaters, 'cause we use the, the FEMA money to help with that, with the cleanup? No, a street sweeper, I know we have this machine that comes by and cleans the streets, is that able to pick up the yard debris from the grass clippings in the storm?
Uh, well, uh, I can, um, uh, we, we do street sweeping, but, I mean, um, the, the FEMA, any discussions on FEMA, PMA that, that I may have talked about were residents that were asking, um, what, how can the township help us in this storm event? And of course, in any event like this, usually FEMA and PMA, uh, step up a, a, and, and make monies available. Now, I don't want to make any, uh, you know, give any assumption that, that that will happen, that's totally out of my control, but what we can do is if they do make monies available, we can help the residents learn about that and the process to apply for it.
Okay, that's fine, 'cause my concern was, like, there's all the yard waste that's been there, if that's been clogging the drains, then that caused flooding into their property, would that be something that that could help with that?
You're, you're making an assumption that was causing the flood.
I'm just asking if that.
There's not enough, there's not enough pipes on the planet to handle the amount of water that came down y- the other day, so, um, you know, I drove around a lot, most of the storm drains were open, so FEMA.
Okay.
And PMA money, um, is available to residents, and we will make, we will do our best effort to make sure that they're aware of it, so they can apply for the funding, it does not come through the township.
Okay.
Anything that would come to the township would be to fix some of the storm inlets that were washed out, um, you know, and other types of, of, of infrastructure that was damaged during the storm, that would be the only thing that would come to the municipal, municipality.
But my question was, is the, the street sweeper machine that we have for the township, will that help, can that help with the debris so that keeps the storm drains with all the yard waste that's washed up?
Well, there's, um.
Or does that not do that?
Not likely, because that, that, uh, street sweeper is not meant to pick up, uh, bulk items like that, it is meant to, um, pick up, typically, we use it after the winter season, when you see cinders that are still on the road from the salting and, uh, cinder-ing the roads, that type of debris. It's not designed for picking up branches and/or grass, that's a long.
So we're gonna pick up that, the trash, or the, the yard waste, um, but what I typically see in, if you drive around town and there's, there's hundreds, if not thousands, of storm inlets, and what you see typically in them is people's trash that they throw out the window of their car, or rolls out of the back of a pickup truck bed, uh, or people that just put their trash out haphazard and not in receptacles, and that all winds up in the inlets, and that's what clogs, it's not so much yard waste, it's usually that type of debris that you'll see all over the grates, and that's what clogs the storm grates, and, and it doesn't allow flow into the system.
Right.
So, um, you know, if everybody would pick up after themselves and pick up trash, and not just throw it out on the street, or throw it, uh, you know, or, or just put a bag out and let the, an animal rip into it, um, it, it would, it would certainly help.
Definitely.
And, and then when, when the DEP and the EPA make us start testing, the, the effluent coming out of our stormwater system, and if it doesn't meet certain standards, like TSS and things like this, um, and, you know, it'll, it'll all help in the, in the, in the ability for us not to get fined, because that's coming next, in part of the MS four plan. So, you know, in answer to your question, the street sweeper is designed for certain things, which is finer particles.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, in the city, they're used at election time.
Yeah, yeah, even now, and then it only picks up fine particles, right?
The city at election time, you see that street sweeper's all over the place.
Oh, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, anyone else?
No, what's your name?
Thank you, thank you. All right, I did have a comment, but I can't remember it, so hopefully we'll, uh, we'll, we'll be, the time we get through the. It was, it was important, and I, I, I can't quite remember what it was, I should have wrote that, but go ahead, Kathy.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm good.
All right, so I, I, I just wanna wish everyone a, 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 a happy Labor Day, um, please enjoy yourself, enjoy yourself responsibly. I know our chief would appreciate that, and our police force, and plus, you will appreciate it as well, um, and, um, Carmen Berlini, what did he used to say, Mark? For Labor Day?
No work on Labor Day.
No work on Labor Day, that's right. Okay, so, uh, enjoy yourself, enjoy the long weekend and the holiday, and let's remember what Labor Day really signifies, it's a tribute to, uh, our labor, and, uh, organized labor as well, and, um, and we'll see you in one month. Kathy?
I'd just like to say also, happy, happy Labor Day, and, um, would also like to, like to say what a great productive meeting we had tonight. Uh, it's really nice to hear that the financial, uh, plan that, that, you know, we have enacted is, is reaping the benefits, the township is reaping the benefits, which, which also, our, our residents are gonna reap the benefits of all, all of the, all of the, uh, incentives that we've had, that we've had to do. So I'm, I'm very happy to see that we're starting to see fruits of the labor, so to speak, and, uh, remember to come to Warminster Day on September the eighteenth, it's a good, fun time for the whole family, so please try to join us, I'll be there, working one of the tables, so we'll be, all be available, and, uh, thank you for all the ones that came today to attend the meeting, and thanks for your comments. That's it, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have a few, I forgot to announce, during announcements, that, um, this coming Saturday, from ten till noon, our friends from Warminster Gratitude will be in front of ShopRite selling the, the shirts and the, um, Warminster, Warminster, or support police signs. Um, also, I wanna remind everyone that the VE Sports Fest is, um.
Oh, right.
Saturday, the eleventh of, um, September, and that's from, I, I think it's from eleven till ten PM, eleven AM to ten PM.
Yes.
So you can actually do a doubleheader, stop at Sports Fest for a little bit and get some schnitzel, and then the Hartsfield Fire Company has their service at seven PM on September eleventh, and for those of you don't know, they've been doing this since, since that catastrophic event. Every year, they have a, a nice ceremony at the firehouse, and they have people, one at a time, get up and read five names of the first responders that we lost, and on September the eleventh, it, it takes, you know, about an hour for the ceremony, but it's really touching ceremony, they do it, we, they couldn't do it because of COVID last year, but this year it's back on again, so.
Good.
It's at the Hartsfield Fire Company at seven o'clock PM on, uh, September the eleventh. And I, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, and a happy, happy holiday weekend, everyone, happy Labor Day.
Thanks, Mark, yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that.
Yeah, I forgot to run the.
We just talked about it, break it for the meeting, so, yeah, okay, Mary?
Uh, again, I'd like to wish Kathy Fresco a very happy birthday.
There you go.
Thank you. And with all of our residents.
Yes, that's right.
Now that you're closer to retirement.
She told me she's thirty-nine.
Uh, thank you, everyone, for your comments, um, especially, um, putting focus on Mascaro, because we, again, are residents in the township, and we are experiencing the same pain that you are, and we appreciate everybody coming out and actually spotlighting the areas that we really need to, that needs to be focused on, and we guarantee that that will be addressed. Um, just also, again, September eighteenth, not only being Warminster Day, but also being Brad Fox Day, you still can register for that event if you would like, and again, please have a very safe and happy Labor Day, and again, thanks, everybody, for coming out tonight.
All right, thanks, Mary, and Judy?
Uh, there's not much more I can say, but have a happy Labor Day and enjoy yourselves, and remember the work that labor has done in this country to build it. The other thing I want you to understand is there's still an opioid, uh, pandemic going on, and if you see something, you should say something, save people's lives, and understand that there's a lot of depression out there now because of the pandemic, and it's upping the opioid use, so we need to watch out for each other and be kind to each other.
I do remember what I wanted to say now. Sorry, sorry to prolong it for another minute. Um, I, I, I gave George Lewis a phone call the other day, um, and asked him how he liked his new, um, his new digs down in Florida, uh, he and his wife, Vicky, and, uh, and also if, uh, if, if Vicky would like us to acknowledge her service, um, on the zoning hearing board, and he thanked me for that, and that's something we want to need to do in October, uh, at the next meeting. And, uh, one of the announcements that I wanted to make was that there are opportunities to serve the community. Um, there are some vacant positions, and we're posting them on, uh, they should already be posted. Um, so I think there's like four, five, maybe six positions that are open, and we will, will be appointing, uh, zoning hearing board, um, member, um, ne- in this next coming meeting.
That's important. We have to fill that.
Yes, so, um, you know, there are other opportunities there, and if anyone's interested in truly serving the community, um, I would suggest that that would be a good place to start. So, well, we look forward to all the applications. That's all I have. And, uh, with that, a motion to adjourn. Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.